I see it.
Okay, Matt.
I think we're recorded. So we need to call out the session as usual?
Um, it's just a budget, yeah, it's just a budget workshop. Um, so, um, we do have a quorum in attendance here. Uh, Lorna, Chris, Matt, and Justin are in attendance. And we're here on Wednesday, April 8th, um, to have a budget workshop, you know, regarding, you know, the current situation we are in and to talk about our future plans. So.
And now I'll take over with my presentation. Okay, so, um, currently, our budget mission is to continue to try to enhance our student core programs within the district, exhibit fiscal responsibility, and align all of our resources to increase levels of student achievement. So let me just give you a, a calendar update. So we're in a little bit of limbo right now. Obviously, the vote got pushed back. Uh, NISBA is suggesting we don't approve a budget until May 1st at the earliest. So we're waiting on guidance for, um, any of the, um, required disclosure materials. Um, that's just a couple to name a few. So, so that's what we're currently in limbo waiting on guidance for. So what, um, what I've done is put together, um, January through March budgets and what those look like. Um, so you can all see these, and I will send out this, I'll turn this into a PDF and send this out to all of you. I should have done that before. I apologize for not. Um, but as you can see right now, we're at the very bottom level in April of 2020. Um, currently, I have, uh, balanced the budget to our, uh, 21.25 million, which does not include an increase in taxes at all. Um, and then our total, I say our total proposed revenue, but that's our total revenue without the hun- without the, uh, the foundation aid as it has come out in the, um, approved enacted budget. So we're looking at $184,000 difference in what the governor said he was going to give us in January to where we are currently. So, um, I just wanted to show you historically what our allowable tax levy has been versus, um, what we have actually done with our levy. So as you can see, what our actual levy was over the last eight years, uh, went from 4.9 million to 5.3 million currently. Um, and then below it is what we could have raised taxes to based on the tax cap. So the next sort of chart I have here for you is, um, the allowable increases as a percentage over the years versus what we actually went out at.
So the blue is the allowable and the red is the actual?
Yep. So, and again, I'll send these to you so you guys actually have this information, um, in a PDF form when we're done with this. Uh. So let's just talk about foundation aid cuts. So the state budget was passed and they took us back to the aid that we were getting last year. So we're looking at 184,484 dollars decrease in our state aid, just our foundation aid. Um, I know John sent the runs out to you. Um, the expense-based aids were the only thing that increased in the governor's proposal, but that's not real because that's still only based on the expenditures that we've had. So what I did is I looked at what I currently had built into the budget for our transportation and our MOSEs aid, which are our two biggest aid categories. And I said, is this reasonable or can I increase in these areas? And based on the information that I have, what I already had in the budget was reasonable, and I wouldn't want to increase that anymore for those. So, um.
The other estimates are as high as you can go, your current estimates?
Correct. For the boat, like for our expense base case, yes. They're as high as I feel comfortable going, let's say that.
Okay.
Nicole, the aid that we receive, is it based on our actual enrollment or is it based on enrollment from some time a while ago?
So it depends on which aid category you're talking about. Foundation aid is a mix of a lot of things, and there's different levels. So, um, and I can, I can look into it further and get into a lot more depth with you on exactly what that encompasses. I don't have it in front of me, but it bases on a lot of things. It's based on our poverty level in the district, um, which is called the, the wealth, uh, combined wealth ratio. Um, it's comprised of what our attendance is. Um, and there's some other measures they have, uh, built in there. There's called a sparsity factor. So the fact that we're, we're, we span a lot of square miles, we get more aid because of that. So there's a lot of things that, um, that encompasses not just our attendance, but yes, that is one of the factors.
Okay.
So, um, the other main thing that people have taken away from the governor, he's going to be reviewing revenues quarterly. He said quarterly. It's really, um, you can see the review periods that I listed. Um, it's not quarterly. He's going to be doing one May 1st, but what we haven't gotten any information on is how long that is going to take? Like, what's that review period? Is it going to be a month? Is it going to be 45 days? How long is it going to take to put a plan in effect? When are we going to know how much aid we're getting cut? We don't know any answers to any of these questions. Those have not been addressed at all. Um, I listened to the webinar yesterday through NISBA, and those were some of the major questions that people had, but, um, no one really knows. So, um, so those are the review periods, and I see that I made an error on that. That should be June 30th. Sorry about that. Um, but, so he will look at that. So now, let's just say he looks at it. He's going to determine how, if our aid needs to be cut, if they're within a percentage of what their revenue estimates are. So if they meet their revenue to 98%, then we're going to get an aid cut, but we don't know what that's going to look like. It does have to be approved by the legislator, the legislature first, um, and they have a certain, um, amount of days to approve that. It's got to be written up in a plan. But nobody knows what that timeframe is going to be for, from him to look at his revenues to us getting a plan that's approved or not approved by the legislature.
So, excuse me, let me understand what you just said.
Sure.
If the state meet, does meet its revenue projections at 98%, we will.
I'm sorry, if they don't meet them, there's a 1% swing. So if, if their revenue projection's $100 and they only make $98, dollars, they didn't meet their revenue projections, they can take, take, decrease our aid for the 2021 year.
Okay, and these are the projections they made when they originally formed the budget?
They did not say what those projections were. I don't know if that's the original budgeted projections or if that's something they're coming up with as they go forward.
Oh, okay. So then.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I do. A floating target that.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know. Um, the only good thing they have said about it, if, so say if this, this first period, April 1st through April 30th, you know, they're down 10% for what they thought. Well, they may be able to make that up in the May 1st through June 30th revenue, um, period of review. And so, that being said, we might be able to get some of that aid back.
Okay.
Can they give you any, any expectations, um, of how big this could be? I know at one point you were throwing out like a 10%, you know, sensitivity type analysis. What, what should we be geared up for?
Matt, that's the million dollar question. I don't know. I'm gearing up. I'm looking at having a list of cuts from 10 to 15%.
Now, is our aid, is it 15 million or what is that aid, aid number? So if you say 10% maybe?
I'm saying 10% of $9 million. Because that's what our, that's what our foundation aid is.
So it'd be $900,000.
Roughly 1.4 million.
But it may only be 25% of that if it's one quarter that they miss. So we're talking a couple hundred thousand?
No one knows. There is no, there's no expectation for how much they'll take back. What I would look back on is the GEA reduction, and the average reduction per year we had in that time period was $900,000. So what I did is like, I looked at what, what is $900,000? That's really 10%. So what, what would we have to get down to cutting to get to that 10%? So I'm putting together a plan that I have 10% cuts. Like, I know what not that $900,000 looks like, you know what I mean? So that there's no, um, question going forward where we would have to cut. Like, these are the things that we have access to cut, and this is what we're going to cut. I think the important thing is I don't want to start cutting things until I have more information. We're not just going to cut things out of the, out of the budget, but that also means just because something's built into these budgets, doesn't mean that that's particularly something you're going to get. So, um, I don't know, a piece of equipment that's currently in the budget now, just because it's in the budget now, doesn't mean it's going to actually come to fruition next year. So it's all just based on a matter of, um, my list of, well, not my list. John and I have worked on it. The administrators and I have worked on it. Just being aware of the areas where we could actually proceed with, with school without, you know, cutting staff. So we're coming up with that list as we speak.
You probably don't know the answer, but I wonder in a normal year, does the state always meet its revenue projections?
I believe they do. I don't, um.
Matt, to kind of answer your question, um, it's, it's at the, you know, the last minute that, you know, they do. And so really, again, we don't have any answers to what might happen. So we're kind of in the mode that districts need to think the worst. And, um, you know, we are very hopeful that during these revenue review periods, um, that, that the districts are okay. Um, you know, and again, this is across the state. And, um, you know, I know most of the state budget, um, in, in expenditures is, is to school districts. And, um, it, you know, something happens, and if it's going to decimate our district, it's going to decimate the, you know, 600 districts in, in New York State. So moving forward, we just have to think the worst. But, um, to answer your question, usually the last, the last minute things, things come through.
Um, so also, one thing, Matt, that we have to just remember is that we are a district that relies highly on our state aid. Some other districts do not. So they're not in exactly as bad of a position as us.
So 9 million divided by a budget of 21 million is 40% or something like that. It's, it's not.
Yeah, that's, that's just foundation aid though. That doesn't include all of our other aids, MOSEs and transportation and building, which I, when I consider what our state aid is, I factor all of those things in there.
Okay, so we get about 5 million from the taxpayers, a little more on a $21 million budget. So maybe it's a 75-25 state aid.
Yeah, roughly.
Taxpayer. You're saying there's other districts then that are getting more from the taxpayers. There are 50-50 state aid to taxpayers, so.
Yeah, or 75-25.
The other way. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, that's interesting. So that'll have a disproportionate effect on the districts.
Obvious, yeah. I mean, most of them are, I'd say, like, you know, a little richer districts where, you know, they obviously tax more, but they're normally near cities, located around like the Buffalo City Schools, located around the Monroe, uh, Rochester City Schools, Syracuse City Schools. They're like right, right around those areas. Um, and they don't, like I said, they don't get as much aid, but they have other challenges as well. I mean, we don't share sales tax. Genesee County doesn't share sales tax with us, but, um, they do get shared sales tax. So those, those things will be impacted. So there's a lot of ways this is impacting everyone, um, in the region, in the state. So, um, so a lot of things to think about. So, um, so here's some of our options I have put together. Um, we determine obviously that the tax levy increase of any, um, what do we want to do with 184,000? Do we want to reduce our budget 184,000? We could keep it the same, um, as it is right now, knowing that we're not going to get that 184,000 and internally cutting expenditures that we know we can cut. Um, or we could reduce it some and, uh, increase our appropriated fund balance, which we already have appropriated fund balance in our, um, in our budget. Um, we could just reduce it completely and reduce our expenditures. We could do a little bit of both. Um, and something else that we can think about, as we know, we're going to have some fund balance at year end, um, going over the 4% and holding that to determine if we need to use it, we can just appropriate more of that fund balance, um, instead of putting any more into reserves.
Sure. So that 4% is what maybe we would have moved into this new capital project reserve?
Nope. So we have an unappropriated fund balance. Um, we're allowed to keep it's, uh, 4%, which we have maxed out. Um, it's almost like a reserve, but it's, it's supposed to be a max of 4% of the next year's budget. But because of what's going on right now, um, there's been guidance that we could keep more than that in this sort of savings account that, you know, if we had a, another special ed kid, or if we had whatever, if they cut $900,000, we can use that.
It's, it's money, yeah, it's money for a rainy day, Matt. Um.
Is this the surplus that we end up with at the end of the year?
No. Um, so hold on one second. I'll get, I'll get the, um, one thing that I'm going to get to you as we discuss reserves is the list, our prior year reserve, um, uh, board-approved reserve fund plan. And that details everything out in it. It gives more explanation, um, and I'll update the amounts so that you guys can all see what those are. Um, because I don't think they've been updated this year. And then I'll give you, um, a, a detail of where we've been at with our, our reserves for the last several years. Um, but.
Can I just ask one clarifying question? So how does the unappropriated fund balance differ from a reserve fund?
It's not, it doesn't really. It's just in the name. So before reserve, reserves were really, um, a big thing, like in the 90s and the 80s. Um, this was the only way for districts to have some, some savings that if something happened year-over-year, um, it's really hard to get down to zero. As, um, you, you all know, expenditures and revenues match. So this is, was their savings, um, their additional savings fund from year to year if something happened.
Okay.
Can I just ask real quick, going back to Matt, so there's a, there's a difference between the surplus and the unappropriated fund balance?
Yes. So the surplus is the difference between revenue and expense at year end.
Okay.
That we would allocate to the reserves or our unappropriated fund balance. You can kind of just consider that another little reserve, but it's got almost no restrictions on it.
So it seems like last year we had a surplus, am I right? A, a pre-sizable surplus?
Yes, that went into a capital reserve.
Okay.
And that cannot be taken back out now?
Correct.
Okay.
So we have some flexibility in our other reserves. Um, I guess there's no better time to be talking about updating our, um, reserve fund plan. Hold on one second. I'm just grabbing out what our reserve fund plan is. Put my hands on it right a second, but, um, uh, we have an ERS reserve. We have a capital reserve. We have a workers, uh, not a workers' comp, an unemployment insurance reserve and, um, one second, I'm just verifying this. Okay, sorry about that. Um, so we have a retirement, an EBLR reserve, an employee benefit, and accrue liability. Um, we have a debt service reserve because we don't use a debt service fund. And that is it. So we have about 833,000 in our unappropriated fund balance currently.
So those are all the, the umbrella, they kind of fall under the unappropriated funds, is what you're saying, those that you just listed off?
No, those are all reserves that have restrictions on them.
Okay.
Unappropriated fund balance is more of an unrestricted type. You're allowed to carry this much over because we realize that, you know, anything can happen, essentially.
Up to 4% until recently?
4% of the next year's budget, yes. It's still a law that you can only carry over 4%, but, um.
Circumstances say otherwise.
Well, right. So the, the worst that could happen in that case is that we get a slap on the wrist. In terms of liquidating a capital reserve, that I would be a little more scared about doing.
But like Matt says, there might be guidance coming down the road where that might be an option?
I have not heard of any guidance.
I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying we need to push for that. If, if our lawmakers are going to tell us, uh, that we need to fund our schools with less money coming from them, that we need to suggest that they need to give us access to some of these reserves.
Is that something, do you think they would move fast enough? I mean, given everything that's going on, I mean, would it be realistic for them to, for us to expect to be able to get that this year?
If, if I could just say, um, again, there, there's no answers to this, and unfortunately, we're in a time where, um, we have to be reactive, and, and I hate that. Um, and, you know, the superintendents sit around each and every week, and, you know, as I mentioned to Matt earlier, you know, we're supposed to have these answers, and we're supposed to make decisions based on, um, our best information that we have at the time. And unfortunately, um, given what we're dealing with currently, nobody has those answers. We, you know, we're building the plane as we're flying it. And I would assume, Chris, that if something bad was going to happen, that we were going to be shorted, you know, foundation aid, or the cuts started to become really deep, that absolutely, that they would, they would have, um, flexibility in, you know, moving some of these, um, reserves around or, or finding additional monies to, you know, to help districts. Because, you know, technically, districts can't go bankrupt, but, you know, how, how deep are the cuts going to be without, um, being flexible with that? So I would assume that if, if something like that were to come down the line, uh, the answer would be yes, that, um, we would get guidance and, um, receive some, you know, um, policies that would allow us to, to be flexible with the monies that we do have.
So I just, I'm just throwing this out there. Not that I'm not saying it's not going to happen, but I don't, I highly doubt there, they would change ad law. They didn't do that during the GEA when they were taking back millions of dollars from districts. So that's just to give you an idea that they don't see things the way we see them sometimes. So.
But I was thinking they've also learned from that time, um, and that they would hate to make those mistakes again because of the effect that that had. So.
That was 2008? Was that 2008 you're referring to, Nicole?
I'm just talking about 2008 to 2016.
Yeah.
That's how long it took to get the restoration of the aid.
Right.
Just so you're all aware of that.
Yeah, because that was tough.
Yeah, that was a tough time for districts.
Those good two years.
Yeah.
I think we'll have discussion about the capital project later, but that's relevant discussion to have, and, and we all, as board members, need to be aware of it. For those that follow the capital project closely, that know that, you know, we have this reserve set up that we can, uh, that we, that we, our share is going to come out of. If I'm a taxpayer that's not on the board and knows that there is a million and a half sitting there, a question I might ask is why are we doing the capital project? When maybe we could run some of these shortfalls with that money, um, you know, your answer, Nicole, is the governor's going to tell us, you got to figure it out, but they're not going to give, give us that as an avenue, and, and we'll find out if that's true or not. But we need to.
Right, right.
Members, you know, be educated on that and, and know that we've asked, um, can have that money to fund our school.
Matt, I have a meeting tomorrow, and I can, uh, throw that question out there and see the type of response I get, and I can throw that up to, um, the district superintendent and, um, you know, um, if I can get, uh, an answer on that for you.
Good idea.
Nicole, what percent increase would cover that gap?
Oh, the 184?
Yeah.
Um.
Maybe three to four percent.
Let me do 3.5%, 3.47%, excuse me. Well.
So at, at the one meeting you went to, Nicole, you said you, you felt like maybe districts generally were going to go out at 0% this year. Um, is that still the case, or are people having second thoughts about that, seeing that aid's being cut?
Hold on one second. I can bring up, we have a shared spreadsheet of a lot of stuff that we have been working on. And, um, it's an ASBO group, a school business official group, and I can tell you just one moment. Um, it's really mixed. A lot of people are, are going out with zero. Maybe I'd say half and half is the way it looks right now. Um, half are going out with zero and half are going out, um, at a percentage increase to some degree.
Okay.
I, I, I just think coming out at zero, given everything that's going on, might be putting us in a future hole.
Chris, I, you have more experience on the board longer than I do. And I, I think I understand your quandary about going out at zero, but what about the whole, and this is, by asking the question, I'm not presuming the answer. I want your thoughts. What about the whole, the community's in now?
I think what's, we're early into it, and I think, given everything that's going on, we're running a risk of it being worse next year. I'm, I'm just looking at some of the things that are happening right now, like outside of education, you know? Governors telling people to postpone big road projects. I mean, Genesee County is not going to do that jail this year because the money's not going to be there. You know, what if all of a sudden we, we don't, and we need to do some bigger things, and now we don't get this aid coming in? Or there's unfunded mandates coming down that we've got to deal with, you know, I mean, you, you know, then what? All of a sudden, we got to hit it five or six? That's never going to go over. I, I just think that, you know, I, I know we have our numbers right now. I don't know how much faith I put in these numbers long-term, just given where they're coming from, and I could be wrong on that. I just think, you know, coming out at zero would just set us up down the road for a bigger increase.
I think if you come out at zero, there's a chance next year has to be two. It shouldn't have to be five or six, um, because we came out at zero. I'm not saying it's, it could be five or six for other reasons, for, um, reduced aid reasons. But it would be because if, if we don't take 55,000 this year, it wouldn't mean that we've got to take a couple hundred thousand next year. It might mean that we just waited a year to take the 55,000. I think you're right, Chris, that, that, uh, the, the revenue picture probably won't get better. I, I do think, though, I would still consider zero, um, but it, it may be kicking the can down the road a bit. It may mean a two next year. Um, because we did zero, um, but if it's five or six, it's because, it's going to be because a lot of other things didn't come through for us, not, not because we did a zero this year. Nicole, do you have, uh, so you laid some things out, 184,000 shortfall, um, talk about projected surplus, and do you have ideas where we can find this 184,000?
Um, for next year, yeah, certainly. We've already looked at, um, with the administrative team, I've already been able to look at, um, the potential um. We have two retirements for teachers aides and we have a lot of non-mandated uh aides. Like, so we have a lot of aides that are with non-mandated students or doing miscellaneous types of work. So we have the ability to um change around schedules and not replace those two people. And that would save us around seventy-two thousand dollars. So I have that. And then we've gone through as an administrative team and made cuts to the budget. And so I have a list already ready.
I I just have to express this. It doesn't seem to me, in my recent experience as a teacher, that we were overly supplied with aides. And some aides are quote unquote, non-mandated, but they are essential for the smooth running of the district because of students who need them. So it strikes me as odd that we would go to some of the lowest paid people in our district, but who fill such important roles in keeping other classes going smoothly because of behavioral issues with students. And we would go to those people to close that much of this gap.
Well, so what I'm saying is that um not that those people weren't used, but we have the ability to whatever they were doing. One of them was mostly doing study halls, I believe. We have the flexibility of other people's schedule of filling those study halls. And um, we have certain aides that, well, I understand, we need them from a safety standpoint, absolutely. I'm not talking about um reducing any aides that we need in the district for safety or otherwise for students. I'm talking about not replacing people that were not a luxury, but almost a luxury to have. Not that I disagree with you, but that's a way to save seventy-two thousand dollars. And if we can function in the exact same capacity without them, I would agree that that would be a good cuz we don't have to cut anybody, um, a good way to save seventy-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, I guess I, in my experience within the buildings, I never saw them as a luxury.
Nicole, is there nothing about a projected surplus this year? Is there, is there nothing about um fund balances that could close that gap without uh terminating employees, without uh changing our programs?
Well, we're not talking about changing any programs. Um, our surplus this year by leaving that um over the four percent potentially and using that to appropriate throughout of next year, we could do that. We can certainly, um, what you're talking about is just appropriating more fund balance from year to year. We can certainly do that. Um, we already appropriate close to seven hundred thousand dollars. So when I started, we were appropriating about one point four million between one point four and one point two over like three-year period, which is a lot for the size of our budget. Um, not saying that we couldn't do that um for a year. But what that does is um when you appropriate fund balance from from year to year, you're kind of moving around um money that would be in your surplus potentially. Um, and so if we go to having an appropriated of like nine hundred thousand this this next year, um, which is absolutely fine, the following fiscal year, if we wanna go back down because we get our aid projections are good, you know, we decide not to go out, what whatever happens with our revenues, we decide they're good, then um we have that additional um amount of money that we're taking out of the appropriated fund balance and having to move into reserves or our unappropriated fund balance from year over year. Does that make sense?
I I think so. You're saying if we wanted to go from seven hundred to nine hundred thousand to fund additional two hundred thousand next year to make up this one eighty-four? If we wanted to go back to seven hundred thousand, um, it would.
It would give us more money. It would essentially create more of an additional surplus at year end for us to move over on the reserves. That's all. I just want you all to be aware of that.
Is that a bad thing or a good thing or a neutral thing?
Um, it's not a bad thing or a good, I mean, I mean, it's a neutral thing. It's just something that we'd all have to be aware of as we as we come to year end um and see that if we had like a three or four hundred thousand dollar surplus, it would look like we'd have a six or seven hundred thousand dollar surplus because of the additional money we'd be moving out of our appropriated fund balance into our reserves. That's all.
So from my understanding, Nicole, um, so like last year, maybe we moved three hundred thousand into that capital um fund?
Nope.
Give or take, what?
Um, I don't, hold on one second, I don't have.
Maybe the number's not super important to me, but it it was.
Whatever, yeah, whatever it was, we moved it into um the capital reserve.
It was seven hundred thousand that we re-appropriated to the following year, is that accurate? We maintained our appropriated fund balance and then with three hundred thousand or whatever that number was, for some reason, that goes a number similar to that.
Our appropriated fund balance last year was six hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Okay. And so we s- we set up the new capital reserve to fund the next project. And if as a board, we agree that we don't wanna worry about funding the next project right now, uh, we could take what would have been dumped into that and appropriate it for the coming year?
We'd have to decide now what we'd be appropriating, yes, but we could do that.
Like, I I don't think I have any interest in funding a future capital project right now, I'll say that.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
So the only thing that we have to be aware of is that in all the legal information, we were funding that to two million to pay for this upcoming project. So if we don't fund that and whatever it does go through, if we don't have that two million, that's gonna cause the district to have to um technically could be an increase to the taxpayers if um if we don't fund that fully to that two million, you know what I'm saying?
I do. What is, is it one and a half right now, Nicole, and we needed to get that to two or?
We're at one million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Okay, so we needed to get that balance to two and your your intention or hope was we were gonna be able to do that with this year's?
Well, I think, so I think we're gonna have, that's roughly three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. We're gonna have more than that in surplus. I'm working with Jordan now to get you a really accurate estimate. He and I are um working on um verifying what our year end, well, like from now until year end, what our uh gas and electric are gonna be um, getting all of our bills paid currently. And so I can do a good estimate to know exactly where we're gonna be at for fund balance.
Okay.
So what our surplus is really gonna be, sorry, I say fund balance, those things are not interchangeable. What our surplus is gonna be at the end of nineteen twenty?
Is it your feeling that it's a little fiscally irresponsible just to use that money to fund next year? That you feel like we need to, at the same time, tighten up a little bit in this coming year? Or maybe as Chris suggests, take a couple bucks from the taxpayers?
I don't think it's irresponsible. We put our reserve, I I think we we save up so we can spend our reserves. So I don't think it's irresponsible to appropriate more for um the employee contribution reserve this year at all. Um, because we have one point seven million in there, let's use it. You know, we we put it out there for a reason. It's one of the reserves that we have more easy access to. I just think that as a district, we should consider tightening up as we move forward because we don't, we're in uncertain times. I'm not thinking, I don't, I'm not thinking doom or gloom. I'm not thinking anything along those lines. I just think that I wanna be prepared. If we have big cuts this year, I wanna give, be able to give you answers for things that I've already done or things that I know we can do as a district to just be responsible as we move forward. So I, again, I don't think it's um irresponsible. I think if we weren't talking about it, that would be the irresponsible part.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. So as I was talking to you, I sort of had a um, I've had some discussions with the administrators. You know, obviously, John and I have had discussions. And I have a phase one, phase two, and a phase three reduction kind of plan in my back pocket, just in case. Um, currently, this is phase one, potentially if we decide to just reduce um where we're at, the hundred and eighty-four thousand and still go out at a zero percent increase to taxpayers. Um, we already know we have a list of things we can cut easily. Um, the things I'm trying to stay away from cutting are things that are gonna impact our tax gap. Um, I don't wanna impact that as much as I can. Um, I know that I still think it gives us some flexibility if we buy buses this year. We've committed to two already with Leonard Bus, so at the very minimum, we have to buy those two. Um, I think that we have buses that need to be replaced. And it really helps our replacement schedule. It does make a difference in the long run, replacing them on a schedule while they're still under warranty for the majority of things and and allowing our um maintenance mechanics, just the ability to do all the the updates to them that are necessary. You know, oil change, uh, tires, brakes, blah, blah, blah. So that's very helpful. So I'm trying to stay away from that. I am looking at reducing our equipment purchases, reducing our supplies and materials, uh, reducing some of our contractual obligations if we can, um, and obviously reducing our furniture if we can.
Nicole, did I just? You said something that I don't understand quite. You said you were trying to make cuts and not impact our tax cap. How would making cuts impact our tax cap?
Um, any of our expenditures related to the capital, to capital purchases, which are buses and um our capital outlay project would um affect our tax cap?
As in how much?
Those are considered when we're looking at how much of a capital exclusion we have.
So if we decreased those things, then that would lower our tax cap? Do I have that correct?
Um, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Nicole, what would the contractual obligations include? What would the, that be in regards to?
Well, um, I don't know. Um, I'm thinking about, you know, having whatever services we have. I know we get like bikes fixed every year. Can we skip a year on that? Um, can we skip a year on maintenance of our um, some of our equipment in the fitness center? Um, can we reduce any of the not, any of the P T O T that is non-mandated for students? Um, I mean, with still, we we do a lot of non-mandated OTPT, but can we? Can we pick and choose which, you know, cuz cuz OTPT is really good for pre-K and kindergartners? Can we still do that, but reduce in other areas that they're doing um to make that more of a feasible number for us? Um.
Nicole, what about the Chromebook uh rotation? How the 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 spending of that versus the aid that comes back on that, what's the impact there?
Um, so we've gone through extensive cuts in the technology part. Um, I don't think we we buy them all through BOSI's, so there will be some impact on that, but we spend the money to get the money. So that's um something we can deal with in the future, you know what I mean? So if we're not spending it now, um, we're getting aid on past um projects, past.
So if we don't spend it in this coming budget, it means in the following budget, we won't get the aid returned?
Correct, correct. And I haven't, so we, I've been over Rob's budget several times. I just haven't recently that gone down to the nitty gritty. I know we have cut some of the, some of the um items out of that in terms of Chromebook replacements. So I know we're we're partially there, so um we've done a lot of cutting to the uh the software that we don't know is necessary um and tried to use our BOSI services more in terms of um the availability of we were paying, we we have in the past, I know, because we weren't, we weren't sure that it was available, um, paid for items that we can get through BOSI's for free because we're part of Coser, so we've still been looking at those items as well.
The school buses, uh, how many year rotation, just out of curiosity of?
Seven to ten. We've kept some of them that were really good up to twelve years.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, it's just kind of like a car, some of them just really suck when you get, no matter what. No, there's like always that one, the, yeah, that no matter what you do is always in the shop. So the one, so some, like, I think, I can't remember, it was last year's bus, I think, that we turned in, was just a workhorse, you know, we didn't wanna get rid of it, but at some point, you know, you just have to.
Yeah.
So, um.
Everybody disappeared.
Yeah, it's really helpful. And then in terms of, I I can cut the two, we were looking at getting rid of some of our cars and getting um a little bit bigger of a vehicle. From a safety standpoint, I wanna keep those in there just because we have kids that are going to Rochester and Buffalo still. And those vehicles are safer and can fit more people in them. So it kind of, it reduces our cost for gas and um it also just keeps them all safer.
What kind of rotation do we do on our trucks, like for plowing and that?
Plowing, I believe it's every five years because we get almost the cost back when we put them at auction as to what we pay for them on state contract. Which is crazy. Cuz we only pay about twenty-four grand for a, for one of those big trucks out there. And then when we put it up in five years, we get twenty grand in revenue on it. What? Who was laughing?
That's me, I'd get that return on my vehicles.
Is there the potential there's uh top twenty to fifty thousand dollars in this budget yet, just in tightening down some of these lines? I know maybe at some point here, we'll, we'll get to some more specific questions on the budget. Um, for instance, our S R O line at ninety-five thousand, um i- is there any reason to believe that we're banking so much time this year and we couldn't possibly use up all the time that we banked? That the sheriff would be willing to knock ten grand off of that, uh, realizing that we're not gonna fully utilize our days?
Yes, if I can answer you, Matt, um, I emailed the Genesee County Sheriff's Office this week. I'm waiting to hear back. Um, I emailed uh Carolyn De La pena over there and asked um about what, what are the districts or what is the sheriff's office gonna do uh moving forward? If we don't return to school, will they not bill us for, you know, half of March, April, May, and June? Or would they use that and kind of um, you know, not bill us the first three and a half months for next year? I have not heard back yet, but I'm assuming that there's gonna be some sort of um, you know, you know, rebate or or money that can be saved in that sense. So I'll, as soon as I hear back, I'll let you know.
Okay, I guess I would just say it's great to bank a few days, but I wouldn't wanna be in a spot where we've got our S R O at events that we wouldn't otherwise uh feel like we need a map because we've got this huge.
Correct, that's my concern. We we have enough hours from him that I'm not looking to gain any more hours. Um, you know, I'm done with that. And uh, you know, this is now a, a money thing in my mind.
Yeah, so I'm assuming you balance that over twelve months, Nicole, so eight times twelve is ninety-six thousand dollars. So if we're talking a few months, we're talking twenty-four thousand dollars?
Um, so we only pay for ten months?
So ninety-five, so ninety-five hundred a month times three months then?
It'd be even more, Matt, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and they have contracts with uh four other districts in our area, so I'm assuming they will come out with with something. And like I said, I reached out on Monday and haven't heard back, but um I'll assume something, something is in the works.
Now, is he, he's probably at home right now, he's not?
No, he's on the road.
Department, he's on the road?
Yes, the sheriff's office is utilizing him. Um, that's kind of a separate, separate deal than what he has with us. And currently, we are not utilizing him.
So that would be our advantage, you know, if he was staying at home and we, they weren't using him.
No, he's, he's. No, he's, he's, he's out on the road. He has actually stopped by here a couple of times as he's patrolling, but he, he is working for them. So, you know, obviously, um, that's.
See, I feel the opposite, Chris. I think that it works to our advantage because he's not here, so he's on the road working for them. So he, they already had to pay him anyway.
Oh, no, I agree. I think, I think that hurts us because they're utilizing him. It's not, uh, you know, a waste of money.
Unemployment. It wouldn't be unemployment. I agree with Chris. I, yeah, absolutely. He's getting paid to do something.
Yeah. So maybe that's something we need to look at going forward in writing a contract is to have some clause for unforeseen school closing that we get to prorate his salary or prorate the cost.
Right.
Right. Well, when we do have, you know, the school closures or, um, you know, just to recap, we pay from September 1st through June 30th and we pay five days a week for all of those days. Um, you know, so we pay for the holidays, we pay for vacation time. He, we, we prepay, so to say, for, for all of those days for him to work. So, um, that's why we can utilize him more on events in the evening and on the weekends and, you know, we can extend his eight hour a day because he accrues hours when we are not here. So, you know, on a holiday, we earn eight hours back. And so that's kind of how this has worked over the last year and a half. Well, obviously, you know, we don't anticipate something like this. So, you know, we've accrued enough hours and, um, you know, we send our, our, our hours over to the sheriff's office and we keep track of all of that. And now since, again, he hasn't worked since the middle of March, um, you know, it, it, it's going to become, I believe, a, a money thing, not a, hey, he owes you, you know, $700. So, um, that was the reason for my email and, um, I'm just waiting to hear back and I'll let the board know as soon as I get word on how to proceed with that.
Nicole, did you have more slides that you wanted to do before we begin? Some specific questions on the budget?
Yes, I do. Just one more, I think. Yep, just one more. Just some other considerations for us all to, to think about. Um, potential of a 1% tax increase from a revenue standpoint. Um, other forms of revenue, I mean, I've been thinking about working on grant applications. I just haven't had the time. Um, now is the time for us to start looking at ways that we can, um, increase our revenue. I mean, whatever that means, however we can do that would be great. Um, I think we're already doing some things. I mean, sharing with Elba is helpful, um, for the buses and their maintenance. That's, that's a big help. Um, but, you know, we just need to have, keep our minds open for other things that we, other ways we can collaborate. Something else that I wanted to make you all aware of, I want to have, um, a person from New York class come to one of the future board meetings and talk about the opportunity for the district to get more money in interest. We have some, uh, reserve funds. We have state aid funds. A lot of districts are moving because they're getting a higher percentage yield on these, um, uh, interest-bearing accounts and they're making upwards of $100,000 a year on interest alone. For us, that would be, that's 1% plus two, almost 2% tax increase. So these are all things that I want you to know. Like I'm thinking about them, but I want to, I want this person to come present to you to tell you exactly what this would be, um, if something we would want to join. I know, I believe the town of Oakfield has recently joined. Um, a lot of governmental municipalities have been, uh, joining this thing called MyClass and putting their aid in there and their money and making just a lot of money on interest. So, um, just something to think about for the future, um, as we move forward. Um, maybe when we can see each other again.
Nicole, when you talk about grants, I think maybe this is a question for John. We explored a grant, I think you explored, I, I use we loosely. Um, a grant to fund the SRO and wasn't one of the conditions that we would cut the SRO out of the budget if we didn't have the grant? Is that a way that we could now become eligible for such a grant?
That is something that I'm working with on the, you know, the other superintendents. You are correct. We initially looked at a, um, a COPS grant and one of the key pieces was that they could possibly fund SROs if we were to declare that due to, um, our budgets that we were going to have to cut our SRO. Um, so I'm working with the other superintendents in the area to see if, because of all of this, if that now has changed our application. The unfortunate thing was that the application was due back in March. Um, so, you know, I think the timeframe for this next school year has passed because I'm assuming that there were many school districts, you know, in the area, you know, poorer school districts across the country that applied for that. So that may be something that we could look for into two years down the road, um, because that application, you know, was closed in March. But yes, now that things have changed, yes.
In light of COVID-19 extending some other deadlines, could we explore that? To see if we can perhaps go back and, uh, revisit the March deadline? Because that would take care of half of our budget shortfall if we could become eligible for that grant. And if they would forgive us missing the deadline because of the COVID-19 restrictions, that might still be a possibility.
Sure. I can reach out to Under Sheriff Mazer. Um, it's actually a grant that the Genesee County Sheriff's Office needs to write. Um, and then again, when we were notified from him that one of the stipulations to that grant, um, was that we needed to prove and declare that our SRO was to be cut. None of us at that time were in that position. But I can reach out to him and see, um, see where we're at and see if there's, you know, um, any flexibility with that grant.
Okay, that would be a good idea.
Um, so some, something else, some other things just to wrap up, to think about. The, um, governor did last year approve in his budget, um, the ability to establish a TRS reserve. We have an employee retirement system reserve. Um, this teacher's retirement system reserve should be something we should explore and discuss because the rates in TRS and ERS are probably going to increase somewhat sharply over the next year and a half, two years. Um, as another way to, uh, place to put our money and there, there are easier restrictions on the ERS and the TRS reserves. Um, for us to be able to get money in and out of them than there is the capital fund reserve. So just something to think about as we move forward. Again, part of my plan is to email you all out our current reserve fund plan with our balances for our current reserves and to have, start having that discussion on where we'd like to be in terms of funding those and approving a new reserve fund plan. And I think now is probably as good of a time as any to, to start working on that. Um, and then just some other things we've talked about, supporting the budget with reserves and appropriated fund balance, what the impacts of that are to subsequent years' budgets and just understanding that if this is an ongoing situation, we can fund our uh, operations with reserves, but at some point that's going to run out. And then what is our plan at that point? Um, and then we've discussed these briefly, our capital project and our 100K capital outlay project. Next year, we're planning on having, uh, the replacement of our PA system at the high school. So I don't think it's a project that we don't want to do. Um, and that will tie into future projects related to our, our phone system, which hasn't been updated in a really long time. So I still want to keep going on those. The 100K project, if it comes down to it and we have a lot of, um, it's an easy way for me to cut 100 grand out of the budget. So I, it's not something that I haven't thought about, um, given the situation we're in. I just think that it's a safety issue from a standpoint up here and at the elementary school. So we just have to keep our focus on, on those items. So that's all I got for you.
That's a lot.
Thank you.
And that 100-page document that I provided for you. So I will start to take any questions that you have right now.
It was 117 pages.
So, that last policy.
I could just, um, you know, kind of give some guidance to the board moving forward. Um, we have been, we have been, um, told and, and guided, um, with our, with our boards not to make any budget approvals, not to make any budget decisions until at least the first week of May. Um, I am hearing, but again, this is just rumor that the potential budget vote would be June 9th. I know the governor has put it off and threw it at least June 1st. I am hearing it's Tuesday, June 9th. But, you know, there is time and I know that districts have approved budgets and now they are, um, redacting from that just because of the situation that we're in. So given our timeframe, I think we, you know, continue on with these discussions. If we want to have another budget workshop, you know, every week for the weeks to come, we certainly can. And I know that, um, districts are very interested in this first look back period of how that is all going to turn out. So, um, we can have discussions and continue on with, um, you know, our questions and, and where we're at, but, you know, decisions don't need to be made today or even in the next few weeks as we were told to at least wait till May and see how this all pans out. So fun stuff.
So Nicole, I wrote down a couple of questions. I'm sure there's a couple of answers. Uh, the data processing fees with BOSI's, looks like that went down quite a lot. Is that just in a different line item or something?
Um, I'll look here.
Page 17.
Sorry about my dog barking.
I wondered who's dog.
Sorry.
Let's see who.
I'm sorry, these two costs, the, um, the data processing, that's also, um, in Rob's line. So his, his line, the, in the, the computer line and those are kind of inter, almost interchangeable. I, what I would like to do is put all of that, all of Rob's line up there because really it's paid through that line, the 1680 line. Um, but it just helps us kind of track where we're at with Rob's budget. So it's possible that last year, some of these, um, the fees that, that are in that 373 were supposed to be in Rob's line potentially. So.
Okay, um, so you've got, of course, all the salaries listed there. And then every once in a while, I just see like an increase for maybe a specific line item. I know we're negotiating with the teachers right now. So I see increase for teachers. Does that representative, represent basically the, the new anticipated, uh, contract?
Um, that was my best guess. What I did is I looked at all the salaries and allocated a percentage. So some of the lines won't have anything allocated along them. I, I looked at what the total, um, OATA salaries were. I assessed an increase that I thought was very reasonable to that. And then, um, kind of just allocated that based on the dollar figure of what was in that line item. So some of them have none, but that doesn't mean that I haven't figured in a raise for all of them.
Sure. So that's just your best guess, the way you anticipate this?
Yep. And I think we're, we, I mean, after today's meeting, I think we're pretty on target for what that's supposed, that's going to look like.
Okay.
In terms of being right on budget.
Okay. Can we talk about nurses? Um, so 62, page 62, we talk about, um, sub-coverage. Do we feel good? I know there's been concerns in the past about lack of coverage in the school when our nurses are out. Do we feel good about our ability to cover that with this budget?
Well, I think that we used to approve using the nurses a lot out of district. We've kind of, um, rein that in a little bit, let's say. So.
What do you mean using the nurses out of district?
Well, I'm sorry, what?
What do you mean by using the nurses out of district?
So when we were, they were doing a lot of those celebrations. They were doing a lot of other types of field trips that were out of district. I mean, almost weekly and that was part of, um, the substitute problem. I think there's still a problem finding sub-nurses. Don't get me wrong. But I think we, we haven't seen the nurses used out of district as much as they had been in the past.
If, yeah, a little bit. If there's days when we don't have nurse coverage, is it more due to just a sheer lack of bodies? Don't assume you can always find a nurse when our nurses may be out? Or is it a funding thing?
Well, I wouldn't say it's a funding thing.
Yeah, it's, it's not a funding thing. Um, it, it depends on the situation. It depends on if and when, um, we know a nurse may be out. Like you said, if there's a field trip next week, we'll certainly provide coverage. Sometimes, um, it's just a spur of the moment that, you know, somebody can't report to work or we're short and we do the best we can. I know towards the end of last year, um, we were trying to get by with having just a nurse within the district just because like, um, Nicole had said, it's hard to find sub-nurses. So, um, you know, we do the best we can, given, you know, the situation, whether it be something that we know, you know, two hours in advance or two weeks in advance.
Okay. I just want to make sure in this budget, we're accounted for as much as we can. Um, page 78, retirement reserve. Um, so that line item is increasing.
Yes.
Yeah. And that's just, that's anticipated retirements and the need to fund?
So I always look at, um, what salaries we have. I do kind of a check because this is all done through the computer, through rates. And sometimes when I look at the figures, I've, I put a little extra in there because, uh, it doesn't account for any of the overtime that we pay out in here, which is all subject to ERS. Um, it doesn't account for, um, some of the additional payments that we make in it. So I look at what our total salaries are by, based on what is subject to ERS, what's subject to TRS, and then I add some cushion in those areas. Um, and then I also look at what we spent the prior fiscal year on that. So I bump that up thinking that we might have more in those areas.
So we went from 20 to 40. Anticipate 20 is not going to be adequate. 40 is a closer number.
I don't know the answer to that. Like I, it's, it's hard to get exactly on. I can tell you, hold on one second. If you give me just one second, I can tell you what we paid ERS last year.
Okay.
Actually this year for last year, sorry.
What page are you looking at, Matt?
Page 78. It's listed amongst a bunch of names. It just says reserve.
So we paid 290,000 last year. That was for the, that was for a part of the current fiscal year, three quarter, it's three quarters of the prior year and then a quarter of the current year because of the way the state's, um, uh, fiscal year is. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. So you've got, you paid 290, you've got budget 40. So there's a balance that's coming from a different line item or reserve?
What?
So the, this reserve line item here says 40. Did you say you paid 290?
Um, I paid 290 and then in total what we have budgeted. Sorry, flip them, flip them pages here. Is 349. So I could probably reduce that a little bit. I wanted to keep some, I like to keep some flexibility in the benefits lines for me to be able to increase or move those around at year end, um, just from a health insurance standpoint, because we look at anybody going from single to family and that's like a $12,000 increase.
So health insurance is going to be my next question.
Can I? Can I just go back and clarify that question? The line on our budget page says 40,000, but you're talking about roughly 300,000. So that's where you're saying the rest of that money comes from some other line?
I said that we paid 290,000. This current year budget has 350,000 in it.
Right, but in our line, it says 40,000.
No, there's a $40,000 reserve in there. Like, like I have, I have a little bit of cushion. No, there's a forty thousand dollar reserve in there. Like, like I have, I have a little bit of cushion.
Okay, I get it. All right. Thank you.
Yes. Okay.
And so my next question was the health insurance reserve kind of along the same line. So that went from seventeen thousand, eighty-five thousand. One hundred.
So, um, I, hold on one second. Yep. So one more. Just want to look. I don't like the way things are in alphabetical order sometimes and I don't name them correct. They're not near each other. Um, but I reduced our, um, reserve this year to sixty thousand dollars. Um, again, I like to have some flexibility. I took out some of the reserve in our other areas. We know that Lee's going to, Lee's going to retire this year. And I'm certain that her retirement incentive alone is around seventy-five thousand dollars. So, um, without having in that line, which is, sorry, termination benefits, far more money in there than that. I like to leave it in the other lines just to have, again, some flexibility in those, uh, benefits to move around.
Okay. Um, page one sixteen.
Yep.
So transfer to capital, see like in three different lines. So it's a hundred thousand dollars every year.
Yep.
That's, that's into the reserve or what is that?
That's, um, they allow us to do a quick project. They cost up to a hundred thousand dollars and get aided at our full aid on that. So instead of doing these maintenance fixes on some of our stuff, you know, and patching it up, we can do a quick project in that year. And the next year we can get our aid ratio on it, which is like ninety-two point four this year. So that's, those are the, the PA systems I was talking about. That's what we, we did last, uh, that's what we're doing this year and that's what we're doing next year. I think, what did we do last year? It's, oh, the clock system. We did, we had, we put in a clock system last year so that all the clocks were exactly the same.
Okay. Um, my last question is on pre-K. I saw in one of the emails that we're getting from the state about how, are they freezing future grants for pre-K? We're okay there. No issues.
They're just not accepting any new grants. You know what I'm saying? So we're already funded. So they're just not accept, they're freezing the future fundings on them.
So the school districts that wanted to apply for that, they're, they're going to be out in the cold. But those of us that are already in it were good.
Yeah. I mean, to, most districts that wanted to have already done it. Um, or should be on top of it. I know actually Batavia just got their full day conversion grant. So, um, I'm not sure who hasn't, but if they haven't, that's a, they're lost now.
Right. That stinks for them. That was all I had for questions. I'll turn it over to everybody else.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, Lorna, did my response back to you make sense?
Yes, it did.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Questions? Anyone else?
Yeah. And I, I didn't write the page down and I'm sorry. I was just curious about the telephone expenditure. How does that, what does that really include? The, the, it looked like all administrators had telephones and then that's fine. I'm just curious what that.
Uh, that's a cell phone stipend.
Okay.
Yeah, Justin, that's, that's part of the administrator's, um, contract.
Okay, okay.
Can I ask a question about that as a follow-up, Justin? There were some phones for administrators that were six hundred and some phones for building around people that were three hundred. What's the difference in the phones?
So this isn't a very good answer, but that's always been the way it's done. Partially because the thought is they don't get called on as much per se. Um, I know that it's not in their contract anywhere to get us, to get an additional amount. Um, the CSEA employees like Scott Boring gets one. Um, oh, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have said that. Sorry. Some of the other, like the, the head cook gets one. The director of facility, facilities, his is full, but, um, that was the thought on that, I think. I don't know that, that there's any rhyme or reason to, to, to that, but that they just would get less phone calls than, than the rest of the administrators would.
And, um, really the, the reasoning behind that law, a long time ago was obviously to have a work phone and then you have your personal phone. Um, and I can tell you, um, it's, it's probably like Nicole had said, it's, it's been in the contract for a while. And I, I, I know from, you know, my own experience, you know, my personal cell phone is my work phone. Um, I don't have two different phones. I know most of the administrators don't because they just feel comfortable using their own phone. Um, you know, but there's that option that if you want a work phone, um, then that's what that is used for.
Okay.
Thank, thank you.
Sure.
A bunch of my other questions were answered as far as the salary goes. And that, that makes sense to me now, what you've said. And I really don't have any, uh, any other questions. And I, I thank you, Nicole.
Sure.
I did hear back from our missing board member. He has a medical appointment in Rochester that they insisted he keep. But he was wanting to know if provision has been made in the budget for improving the handicapped accessible entry points, if they're still in the budget. Or if that's, well, are they still in the budget?
So they were not in the budget. They were in the project. They were written into our project. And as far as I know, are still in there. Nothing has changed from that standpoint.
So if the project is delayed, then there won't be any improvement in handicapped accessibility in this year's budget?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, even the project was just going to be, oh, the timeframe of benefit was on the project, John.
I'm sorry?
What would the timeframe have been to approve handicap accessibility if, uh, if the capital project goes forward? When are we talking about putting shovels on the ground? Is it?
Um, because of the, the paperwork and the designs and everything that needs to take place, um, we're looking at not this coming summer, but to begin next summer. So you're talking probably a little over a year, you know?
Eighteen months, probably.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Cause they has to, everything has to get approved. Uh, we all have to go through the process. Then all the, all the designs have to go to SED and be approved. Then we have to put bids out for the work. That all takes, I mean, honestly, eighteen months is probably quick.
Right. I will let the board know that I, um, did ask questions in regards to obviously this, you know, financial, you know, um, concern that districts have and the state is facing of, you know, what's going to be the return on our capital project? Are they going to fund us to what we expected? Um, with the fifteen point three million dollars? And the answer still is yes. Um, there are some districts in the area that are, are, that have capital projects going on. And there's a couple of districts that are in our boat that, um, are going out with capital projects. So at this point in time, um, they are still fully funding to what we expect for these capital projects. Could that change down the road? I don't have an answer for you, but you know, we've been up to date and, and trying to make sure that if we go ahead and get this approved, that we're going to get the, the returns that, that, um, we think we're going to be promised. So.
Just based on history, they have never, once you have an approved project and it's in a, in an approved aid category, they have not unfunded it unless you have not done the due diligence to do a final cost report on it. So they have never gone back and taken building aid away from anybody unless you have not completed a final cost report to my knowledge. So, so once you have an approved capital project, they, they would not just take that money away. That's my understanding. And in the past, even in their hardest times, they have not done that.
Yep. You're correct, Nicole.
Well, that's good.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
I saw in the budget, it looked like they're increasing funding for, um, mental health in the schools. Um, is there any update on that satellite office, John?
Um, yes, actually the, we had talked about, um, getting a crisis intervention specialist through, um, the Center for Youth Services. That cozer was actually, um, being approved through BOSI's, through the TIG cozer, which is the trauma, um, you know, illness and grief, which we actually are a part of. So something that we're, that we can still consider is that, you know, a fifty thousand dollar specialist to come in, um, at an aid ratio of about, um, eighty or so percent, um, would certainly give us some savings. We have not actually heard back from the Genesee County Mental Health. That was the, the Center for Youth was a part of that. Um, but I know that that has gone through. So, you know, we can pull the trigger and say, sure, for, you know, ten thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollars, we could have a full-time crisis intervention specialist here. Um, but again, with everything that has come down the line over the last month or so, um, we have not made that a part of our budget as, you know, at this point. But, um, so I, I have not heard back from the Genesee County Mental Health. And, um, but you know, that, that person is still employable if, if we want to pull the trigger on that. And you know, again, that could be, that could be the office, but we were looking at having the office with, you know, two or three different, um, resources in there. So, but that's been kind of put on the back burner with, with the budget that we're looking at now.
Okay.
That would be just for students?
This would be, yeah, this would be a full-time employee, um, that would be assigned to us through the Center for Youth Bureau. They had come out and presented to us that, um, you know, a, a full-time employee, um, would be somewhere around the, the fifty-five thousand dollar range, but that they were working through Genesee Valley to see if there was a possible cozer that we could have, um, through the mental health. And I'd been speaking with Julie Donlin and she did confirm that they were going to run the cozer through the TIG, um, which is along those lines. And if we were interested, we could get aided for having that position within our district. I know there are some districts that already have two or three people within, um, their districts. The larger districts have those people already in there. And so that's an available option that I would like to see be part of our family support center here and to work in conjunction with the Genesee County Mental Health.
We do a Kendall through Orleans County and it's, it, it's a big deal for us to have that extra person there. They're, they're, they can be there, uh, a little bit more flexibly in the evenings sometimes or, or in early mornings. And it's, it's beneficial, um, definitely our middle school population, uh, who's, who really needs some, some help. So it's something that I'm very, uh, curious and interested in right now, especially if we get that eighty percent there.
Sure.
Um, one thing to add to that, um, we get eighty percent on top of, uh, there's a max salary. So I think it's like forty grand. So they aid us on up to a certain amount and then excess salaries we just pay. Um, but one other thing we are doing for employees, we have signed up for the employee assistance program. It's pretty cheap through BOSI's. It's also, uh, the person that runs the trauma, illness, grief, um, cozer, she does run that. So we are committed to trying to, um, get assistance for our employees as well. Um, I know that.
Is that current, like assistance now currently or that, is that down the road?
The next fiscal year.
Okay.
Next year. We signed that up for that next year. So they would be able to, to talk to somebody if they needed it free of charge. Um, they have allowed us to share out information this year as well. I mean, it's been really hard on a lot of people, you know, everything going on. So, um, I reached out to the trauma, illness, grief person and they said, certainly share my information out and we'll be able to try to help as many people as we can. So.
Yeah. So those, those services are actually being provided to us, um, during this whole time. And then we signed up for, for the next school year.
That's, thank you.
Okay. So some of the things I just need, we need, well, not just me, John and I need directives on. Like where are you thinking you're at in terms of taxes? I mean, I know we don't have to make a decision now. Or do we want to schedule another meeting and have more, further discussions about it? What, here's what my plan is to get out to you, um, today before I leave. I want to, I'm going to give you the PowerPoint that I presented to you. I'm going to give you our current reserve fund plan with our current numbers. And I'm going to give you the trends of our reserves over the last several years. So you can see where we've been at. The reserve fund plan has all the information you need in it. Um, it's got a description of what the reserve is. What we can use it for, what the laws are and what the current balance it would have been as of June thirtieth, twenty nineteen would be. So if you just want to look that over, um, and then I guess we'll go from there. So, but I just need, I mean, I guess John and I need to know how we want to proceed or do we want to wait and schedule another meeting and determine how to proceed? Or discuss at the next board meeting? I don't know.
Nicole, sorry, Nicole, did you, um, did you say that one point eight one was our tax levy cap?
Uh, yes. Hold on one second. I'm pulling that back up. Two point four two.
Two point four two. Okay.
One point eight one was, I believe, what it would, what the percentage to bring the district, the one eighty-four, forty-four. Nope, nevermind. I don't know what that was. I don't know what one.
For to cover that gap.
Correct. Sorry. I don't know. I have one eighty-one written down. I don't know what that's for though.
So you said it was two point four two?
Yep.
Okay.
I think we're a district in good financial standing. Um, the, the pain, the most painless way to get through this year is to see if, because of the benefit of being a, a district in good financial standing, what's available to us without making any program cuts, without making any staff cuts and being as responsible as possible to taxpayers. Uh, how can we utilize the fact that we've been responsible the last few years to get us through this in the short term? So my opinion would be exhaust those resources for us. If there's any tightening of line items such as, you know, SRO or any of the other things that we discussed, that of course is also painless. Um, and then after that, if it's program cuts, if it's staff cuts, and if it's, um, taxpayer funded, um, increases needed to make up the shortfalls of the aid, then we'll talk about that. But search the, the painless things first. Tell us what ramifications are when we do that for the future. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I, that sounds like a good plan. But combining that somehow with Chris's caution about what if things get worse in the future? Do we need to have any future issues under consideration while we go for the painless things this time?
I, I wonder if there's a way possibly to strike a balance between the two that, okay, we look at one, one and a half percent and then go through looking at cuts from there, you know, like Matt had said. Try, try to go easy in the beginning, um, some supplies, some equipment, things, things of that nature that might be a luxury, if you will, to, to close that down and see where we are.
Next thing.
Well, I, I think, yes, go ahead, Hack. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, buddy.
No, I, I, I think it's, you know, it's hard to look forward and, 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 you know, not, not be concerned. Um, I, I liken the phase one, where we're looking at, where Matt kind of says and Hack is saying and Lauren is saying, where it's, 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 it's that tightening of supplies, contractual obligations, you know, furniture. Gosh, I think we can do without, uh, buying a whole lot of new furniture. When you look at some of those U-shaped tables and things, do we really need those things currently? And, uh, that equipment piece as well. Um, yeah, I'd hate to see us go all the way. I, what, I don't know if you said it was two point four. Yeah, I'd hate to see us go all the way. I, what, I don't know if you said it was 2.4, Nicole, or, 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 or what it was, but I think there's going to be a balance we have to look at. Yes, exhaust our reserves that we have to an extent. Because once they're gone, they're gone, right? I mean, that's-
Right.
It's a whole of a reserve. Um, so yeah, I, I, I'm very hesitant right now to make any declaration of where I stand. If John is correct, and I think you are, John, is saying we have a couple of weeks here at the minimum to, to, to move forward with this.
Yes.
We were looking at probably a Ju-, early June vote as it was.
June 9th, he said.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and I, I think what Nicole and John were talking about, saying once they've committed that aid, they've not pulled it back, I, I think that's definitely something we gotta chew on heavily here because, you know, we, we go through and do the project, and we, we, they've made that commitment to us great. What if that's different next year? And that changes the scope of things quite a bit.
What if what's different?
What they're going to give us as far as aid goes in the future. You said as of right now.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So that definitely puts us in a better standing here. You know, hopefully, John, not that that's going to be a huge gap changer, but John can hear something from the Sheriff Department about, you know, our situation with the SRO and how we've not, you know, we're paying for them, but not being able to use them at the moment, and maybe there's something you know, some way we can come to a compromise there. You know, how soon that will be, I don't know, but cross our fingers and hope for something to bounce our way here. You know, but at the same time, hope for the best and prepare for the worst.
Right, and I agree with Lauren's concern about aids. I, I, I totally do. Um, but I, I do believe that there can be some finagling uh, done with, uh, some looseness in some people's scheduling, and I know teachers are going to hate me for saying that, but I, I, I've been there. I've added aid into my classroom every single year for 15 years. And I don't, I, I, I love my aids to death, but if it was a real tough time, I think I probably could manage. With some assistance, of course, and I'm talking one-to-one aids, I'm talking floating aids, I'm talking all different kinds of aids. And it, it, it kind of, the fact that these two were possibly retiring makes it easier for me to hear because it wouldn't mean that we're, you know, we're, we're getting rid of an actual person here, uh, per se. They're, they're losing their livelihood. So it's, uh, yes, they're absolutely needed, but, uh, could we get by? I, I think we could.
You know, that's, I was just thinking about that issue of aids, and I was, uh, trying to pull back and look at big picture. We've talked about in earlier meetings about, um, and then in this one, about being very careful about our special ed placements out of district. And what that translates to on the ground is more of those students, us educating them in district.
Correct.
Which not always, but often leads to some pretty severe behavioral considerations that need to be managed while they improve in district. So it wasn't just a knee-jerk response on my part to question the cutting of those positions, but if we are already thinking about limiting our expenditures or being very careful in our placements out of district in special ed, we need to manage those, manage and provide for the education of the special ed students in district, and also for the smooth and orderly education and protection of the regular ed kids. And sometimes that depends heavily on aids. So what I would say is let's look at the whole picture, and this is something that probably John and the other administrators have to do. Let's look at the whole picture of our overall special ed placements, especially if we're thinking of bringing some back from their out-of-district places. And look at that in the context of not replacing aids. Also, that would go along with trying to limit or control the cost of our quote-unquote non-mandated OTPT costs, because some of those that are non-mandated, I'm already thinking about speech therapy. My understanding is that we're just servicing the mandated speech and language therapy needs, and those are only for students with IUPs and 504s. However, I know from experience that many of our students need speech and language therapy, and they have neither an IEP or a 504. So as we make these cuts that look good on paper, I just want to caution or encourage, I guess, that they be looked at in light of the whole special ed and therapy program. So we really make sure that if we have aids, we can restrict some of our out-of-district costs and placements. But that in reality, they might depend on the existence of those aids.
Yeah, Lauren and I, and I'm not answering for Nicole or John at all, but I was, it goes back to a prior meeting that I, it's coming into my mind with, I think there was an addition to a 1211 classroom. Is that, is that correct, Nicole?
I'm sorry.
There was an addition to a 1211 classroom that we were looking at a new-
The addition of, of a 1211, right?
Yeah, I don't- Has, we wouldn't discuss not replacing somebody lightly in that scenario. Um, it's been a discussion that we've had from those standpoints and actually looking at, at, you know, what our aids are, are doing, and, um, we would never cut an aid that is certainly, um, A, with a student that's, um, that's being helped, um, or B, in a situation that we, we didn't see fit.
No, that's not necessarily what I'm getting at. I'm just thinking that if we're bringing services back in-house, and we actually have access to a 1211 setting, that that does take into account some of the the difficulties a, a student with an IEP may encounter. Uh, and that way, there is um, an option then to have that in, in district, and I'm not-
Right.
arguing you.
No, no, and I think we're looking at what our needs are next year. Right now, we don't have a full master schedule done yet. But there might be some flexibility for students that are aging out and not coming back, and, and, um, wh- what do we do? You know, repurposing those aids, and then, um, looking at all of our, um, the 1211 we have at the high school, and what students would feel that fit in that need, or, um, moving, and it's, this is like way too down in the weeds, but we've already had these discussions on what that's going to look like next year, and how those special ed, um, rooms are going to look.
So my bringing up the issue, I did not in any way mean to imply to John or you that you were lightly cutting them. These are just-
No, no, I didn't, I didn't take it that way.
Okay, good, because my thoughts are that the more we pull back from out-of-district specialized placements and try to recreate that in-house, the more we might rely on aids. And I'm just bringing that up again so that we don't it's easy to fall in the, I guess I would say the error of thinking that those are easy positions to cut when for the good of the children in the district on the ground, they're sometimes key. And I do realize that you can move people around and change assignments and et cetera. I just, I just wanted to put that on the table. It's just a concern I have.
All, all that it really does is it just presents an opportunity. Bottom line is, um, like, we are not talking about reducing programs, reducing any sort of things for students. We do not want to, um, you know, lose staff and lose positions. That is the last thing. That's not even on our radar. But just given, you know, oh, you know, somebody is retiring, and, you know, there's another teacher retiring at the end of this year. What does that do? And how does it, it, it almost forces us to look back at our programming and, and to be efficient and effective. And all that really does is just presents us an opportunity. So, you know, that's on the table. We've had those discussions, and again, nothing has been decided. It just, again, it presents us an opportunity of, it, it forces us to look back at what we're doing and what we need to provide, um, and what things are going to look like for next year. So.
Right.
Well, as far as the capital project goes, John, when, when do we need to have a feeling if we want to move forward with this or not?
Well, first of all, I'd like to have, um, my recommendation is to move forward with the capital project. Again, I think we need to be very clear with our residents that, um, despite what is going on, this is really completely separate than, than our budget and, you know, a possible tax increase, anything like that. I, I thought we did a fantastic job, and I, I thought we were on, on, you know, on schedule to have this, you know, a, a thumbs up, and, and we were very transparent. And now all of a sudden, you, you know, we're hit with this. So, um, really what it, what it boils down to is, um, having people and having the authority of having people, you know, come in on campus to vote for this. I could, you know, I can reach out to SCI and, you know, the design company that we're working with and our school attorneys to talk about if and when we wanted to have an actual vote on this. What would that look like? Um, one of the things that concerns me for this June 9th budget vote is they talked about it as having it all through absentee ballots. I, you know, and we kind of shake our heads and, you know, I, I don't know how, how that would go over. So, um, we continue to work. You know, we don't want people out and about. We don't want people coming here on campus and, and congregating to vote. And so, you know, all of this stuff has been delayed, and that's why they're delaying the school votes is, you know, they don't want people on campus and in schools and them congregating. So, you know, I'd like to have it as soon as possible. So, you know, the clock gets moving, and we start, we start, uh, you know, getting the plans in place and, and can, like Nicole said, you know, get things approved through state ed and, and get moving on this. But I just, I just don't have the answer. You know, like I said, the, the next thing was to have it with the budget vote, because people are going to be here to vote for the budget. They might as well vote for the capital project. So I, I really don't have an answer. I, I think the big thing that we need to make sure that the residents understand is that it's, it's not, it's completely different. And the capital project has not changed, and if we decide not to do this, or the community votes it down, it's not like we have $15.3 million, or we have this money sitting here that will help us with our budget. It's, it's completely two separate scenarios.
So I, I think you did a great job of presenting that capital budget. I do think it was probably on its way to getting approved. Um, I think we were considering, um, a, a budget that would have included a 1% tax increase. My opinion on whether, on whether or not we continue to move forward with this, uh, capital project would depend on how we make up the 184,000. Now, I don't think anybody's talking about going over the tax cap to for, or whatever the number was there that you presented, Nicole.
No.
But if, you know, if we're talking about getting that reserve to the 2 million that it needs to be by taking $300,000 of surplus of this year and plunking it into that. And as a result of that, we need to increase taxes up to the full tax cap number that's allowable. I, I would have concerns in the community, you know, talking about that. That, to me, doesn't feel as though it's tax neutral anymore. So my opinion of whether to move forward depends on, on what needs to be done to make up that shortfall.
Yeah, and I think if Nicole, um, over the next, you know, several weeks can come up with a an idea of where we might be at the end of this year. Um, I know the board had questions about, you know, since we're, we're closed, you know, we have to be, you know, saving monies here and there, and that's kind of a hard, hard question to navigate. Because there's, you know, certain line items and certain things that we have to calculate. But, um, you know, if over the next few weeks Nicole and I sit down and kind of get a picture of where we're going to be at the end of this year, we can share those numbers with you and provide a, provide a plan on, you know, how to move forward. Again, I think the good thing that, that we have is, is time, um, you know, but, uh, you know, again, there's just a lot of unknowns out there that we just can't answer at this time.
Well, so just to add to that, we're still paying BOSI's, we're still paying our health insurance, we're still paying all of our employees. So from that respect, we're not going to see any savings there. We're going to see some savings in electric, we're going to see some savings in gas, we're going to see some savings in diesel and gas. But we're still, you know, we're still delivering meals Mondays and Wednesdays. And, I don't know, we still have some things going on, and we're still paying for some things, and I have reached out to Jordan and asked him, can he buy supplies for the, for next year, this year? So we're working on getting those numbers together. And so I want to have a really clear picture, and I should have that by the end of this week, um, of what he's going to buy and where we're going to be at, so that next week I can do a really good projection for everybody to have more their arms wrapped around.
I mean, we're gonna, buildings and grounds are going to have to start coming in eventually, aren't they?
Yes, Jordan has them slated to come in next week.
Which, without an MOU, we're going to be paying their base wages plus time and a half.
Why?
As they come in.
Why?
Because that's in their contract.
That if they come in while school is closed?
Correct.
So that's going to have to be done very judiciously then.
That is correct, John.
Otherwise, that's, I, I-
Yeah.
Yes, we've had, we have addressed it. Um, currently, right now, they are not working. And, um, you know, so when the weather turns, and obviously things, you know, like the grass needs to be mowed, and there are some things that need to be kept up. Jordan and I are, um, in conversation about who is working, the hours, and, um, yes, to answer your question, yes, it is.
So John, what do you, what do you got for in the school right now? Who's, who's coming in and out of this school district?
Um, we only have the cafeteria staff working to prepare just for the community. That is it.
Okay.
We are using a couple subs here and there for just, um, items that need to be addressed, but other than that, nobody is working.
So no custodial staff, no maintenance, not, not often?
No, Jordan, having them do building checks. He's doing building checks from home, like looking on the cameras, verifying that, you know, there's no water breaks, there's no this, there's no that. He's periodically stopping in. Um, he's checking all the controls, making sure the temperatures are right. Um, and then obviously with the school lunch staff, periodically, they have to go down and check the freezer and stuff down at the elementary school. Um, all the meals are being prepared out of the middle high, but, um, it'll be interesting to see what happens because that's the big, we have about five people here doing meals because there's so many. So, um, you know, they're getting their base wage plus time and a half, which is they're essential employees, they're worth it. I, you know, that's worth every penny of, of, you know, getting meals out to people who need them. But, yeah, so that's where we're at.
Bring your chrome book on a tractor and multitask, right?
There, we can't use subs to mow the lawn?
They have to be approved.
If the regular workers are not working because school is closed, can we get, use subs?
Does that set us up for grievances?
Yes.
We have to call them in in a certain order based on their contract when they, when there's emergency closings. So unless they said, no, I don't want to come in, and I'm never coming in. Plus, we have a tra-, a big tractor to mow the amount of lawn we have, so I don't know that I would necessarily trust just any one of our subs on that. Um, I don't even know if we have sub ground people, because we have two of them. So typically, when one's off, the other can fill in, um, for the mowing that they have, so.
And I, I'd hate to circum, circumvent our staff in any way, shape, or form, and if they can, if they, if they're willing to come in, and they're willing to, you know, do the job that's needed to be done. And again, I'm going to sound like a broken record, and it's safe. Uh, that's what we have to make sure that we're, we're being here is safe and a good model for the rest of the community. I'm going to keep saying that over and over again until this is over with. But if we give them that option, because they deserve that option, because they've been with our district for however long, I'd hate to, to go around them and have like a, a scab worker come in.
Right.
Because that's what that would seem like. I would hate to be circumvented and have a sub come in for me, uh, a, a, as, as a teacher. Uh, so, you know, safe.
I'm brainstorming.
Yeah, no, I know, I know, I know.
That would just save us the halftime too, right? We'd simply- We'd simply be paying the person that's not working, um, their full day's wage. The other option is furloughing employees, right? John, if, um, if, if the group is insisting on being paid time and a half and you're gonna have to keep people on in order to keep the lawn mowed. Then you're gonna have to make up that money or potentially you could make up the money by furloughing.
Or you can aisle mow the lawn.
Yeah, um, we've. We've had conversations.
I got time on my hands.
Yeah, we've had conversations within the region. Um, unfortunately, one of the governor's executive orders is very gray. In furloughing employees, um, due to the fact that we are under, um, you know. To apply for these waivers, to, to apply for these reimbursements, to apply for the food reimbursements that we're getting. You know, we're directed that we have to provide, you know, childcare and food service and the continuity of learning. But they come with stipulations and one of the stipulations that. The CSEA is holding very strongly to is that for us to, um. Be considered essential and do all of these things and apply for these waivers, which I have, we cannot furlough employees. Um, and like I had said, I had put out an MOA, um, to the CSEA in regards to. Your concerns that we're talking about here. Um, I received a call back and it doesn't seem like they are. In any mood to move and to negotiate. Um, so the longer this goes on, um, our decisions may get a little tougher. But at this point in time, like you said, Justin, you know, Jordan and I were very con- you know, conscientious of who's working, how long they're working. Um, and how long we need them for, so.
Now just, so I'm clear on this. If students are not in. Then those staff also don't report.
Correct.
Okay.
Right now, right now, um, the cleaners aren't working, um, there are no buildings and grounds guys, the mechanics aren't working, the bus drivers aren't working. The only people that we have here are the cafeteria staff. Um, I think maybe for a few hours, a couple times a week, we have, um, someone coming in just to clean up the cafeteria. But again, um, the grass is kind of getting long out front. Um, it's supposed to snow this weekend.
Say, hold off, hold off, hold off.
Yeah, so, right. So, um, you know, Jordan and I have been talking because he did say that he wanted, um, a couple people to report next Monday. I'll be speaking with him, you know, over the weekend and to be honest with you, if they don't need to be here, I don't want them here. Um, you know, obviously for their own health and safety, but, um, obviously the, you know, the situation that we're in. But sooner or later, you know, the weather is gonna turn and, you know, we're gonna need people out here, you know, to mow and. And, you know, clean our buildings if we do come back. And so, um, you know, that's, that's something we'll just have to monitor, but, um.
So, um, one other thing, they have been. Come in twice, the, the mechanics because we have, um, DOT inspections that they have to prep for. And the DOT is still coming out to do inspections, which we need to have done on our buses to have them ready. Uh, when we come back. So there was two, um, cases of them coming of, uh, one person coming in. Just to get those prepped and get those done. So.
If anybody does come, we have to make it clear that if you are not feeling well, please do not come in. Okay, I think that, because I think it's happening in certain places that are deemed essential, people are still coming in sick. And then it's not just having that one person quarantined, it's a whole office.
So the beauty of those positions though, Justin, is that it's just the two of them and then the one of them. So.
Right, and there's a dendritic effect, you know, it just, yes, they're married probably, they probably have children. And then it just goes, I, I get it. I, I, but I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sound ridiculous over and over again that we have to determine who's in our building. Where were they in our building? Not going crazy about it, but just to say, hey, this person came in, this is where they were, they were healthy. I don't want it to come back on our district that we, something happened because we were not on top of it.
Oh, no, I'm with you, for sure.
How about sheep? We could bring in sheep to mow the lawns.
What do you got over there, Lammer?
Couple of years ago, don't tell the girls, they're gone.
Oh, man.
Mine, mine were picky. They were picky eaters. I don't think they would have served the purpose.
Your girls or the sheep?
Both of them.
I've got hundreds of temporary fence posts we could use to move the pasture.
Let's do it.
Access to goats.
No, goats are worse. Avoid the goats.
I got caterpillars over here and a guinea pig. I don't know what the heck that's gonna do.
You guys have any other questions? I mean, we can discuss, um, you know, I can stop recording, we can discuss our next meeting or, or if, uh. You know, I, I figure that at the very, at the very least, we can meet just once a week. Um, and just to kind of give you an update of where we're at and, and talk about, you know, the news over the last few days. And, you know, Nicole will, and I will keep, you know, kind of crunching numbers and tell you where we're at. And, uh, I think it just might help, you know, keep everybody apprised of, of what's going on and, uh.
I'm thinking that's a good idea because I, we don't have to make decisions. We've been advised not to make firm decisions. So at least every couple of weeks, we would need to meet in. Maybe with more information, we'll be able to make wiser.
Keeps our conversation moving.
Sure. Does, does this day and time work for everybody? Do we wanna meet, um, you know, Wednesday, the fifteenth at? Ten o'clock, I can.
That's my dog too, sorry.
Nicole, when was our, when did we do, uh, negotiations with the OATA? Was that Wednesday?
That's Monday.
That's Monday, okay. Um, do we wanna set something up for next Wednesday at ten o'clock? Um, even if it's just a twenty-minute conversation, if there's nothing new, we can at least. See each other's faces.
I'm gonna have to work back on the face part, eh?
That works for me. I don't know what Matt's schedule is.
That's fine. Your, your notice requirements were okay there, John, all that'll come together.
Yeah, if you guys agree to that, I'll just let Tara know and she'll, she'll post it and, um, we'll continue to just have these conversations.
Are we gonna have a regular board meeting on the regular board meeting date? Which is April?
What, what will, as far as the business of the district, John, you'll need things approved, done, or what, what do you have?
Currently, right now, um, everything has really been put on hold. Um, if we, if we decided to have a board meeting on April twenty-first. I, I probably don't have anything for you. Um.
Well, we still need to approve all the treasures reports and the claims auditor stuff.
Right, I mean, there's stuff like the inner operations of the district, you know, those types of things. Um. And again, there's gonna be a lot of unanswered questions, um, just even regarding, you know, the sports season and, and things like that. That we're gonna have to work out. But unless, you know, like I said, Nicole probably has, you know, official. Documents that just continue need to be approved, there's nothing special, um. That the board.
Should we just, should we just push this budget workshop discussion to then and then we can knock out both of them? It's the next six days, it's almost two weeks instead of getting together in a week. Um, sounds like May first roughly is when we need to have all this hammered out by, so we'll lose six days, is that critical? Or should we just put it all together, do both of them at the same time?
Um, we can do that. And I think, um, even when it gets to be the first week of May, I don't think decisions really need to be, to be made. Um, just because everybody's gonna be waiting to see what this first lookback period brings, school districts from the governor, so.
Well, I think they haven't given us an official board date for the budget, like a date yet, so we don't know even. When that's gonna happen, the vote part of it's supposed to happen. So.
What does everybody else think about just doing both on the twenty-first?
Sounds good.
We're gonna do it during the day like we did last time? Are we gonna hold it, uh, in the evening?
During the day works fine for me. What do you guys?
Well, for me.
Do you wanna change that, John, the posting for the next meeting and call it like ten AM to twenty-first?
Twenty-first at ten AM, um, so we'll have the board meeting and then afterwards we'll go into our budget workshop?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, it shouldn't be too much. It's just we wa- I wanna keep having the, uh, the warrants approved, which are checked, which there's not a lot. But, you know, it's just they need to be looked at and approved, um, from an accountability standpoint, make sure you guys are all aware of those. Um. To move forward, so, um, that would be awesome.
Sounds good.
Okay, so then just to wrap up, I'm getting you the PowerPoint. I'm sending you the reserve fund plan and some other information for you all to look at so that at the next meeting, we can talk about, um, updating our reserve fund plan. Along with the, um, the budget, if that's okay with you.
It sounds good.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Very good. Thanks, guys.
All right, stay safe, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.